All right, we'll bring this meeting to order at 7:07 PM. Adoption of the agenda. Anything to add?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion by the councillor. All in favor? Passed. Regular meeting minutes from May 9th. Everything's correct? Everything looks good?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda minutes from April 9th as presented.
Motion by councillor Zimmer. All in favor? Passed. Moving on to delegation. The woodshed requests to use arena mezzanine.
Yeah, so we have members of the woodshed martial arts group here as a delegation to council tonight. They've got a proposal to use the mezzanine for their martial arts center, to lease that out from the town. And we, just a quick background, we actually met with them a couple of weeks ago to talk about their proposal. We thought it sounded great, but because it's a community use center, we thought that it would be great if council, they could meet with council and council could ask them some questions and then proceed from there. So I'll just turn it over to the group.
Sure.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thanks for having us. So we, as you guys know, did this three, actually, it's been five years now, hasn't it? Holy moly. Anyways, started the woodshed five years ago in a church basement. Some of you were members or had kids that were members. And it was just this little dream of ours to kind of, you know, give this community something that wasn't just hockey, wasn't just football. And we grew in one year to a almost 100-member club.
Sorry, Ling, what do you just, I know what's in the way.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
You have, if you can speak into the mic because the live stream.
Oh, you bet. Sorry. We're not loud enough. Okay, sounds good. Okay. Yeah, so we grew in one year to almost 100-member club. And we rented a building just east of the tracks. And when COVID hit, we obviously shut down. And a year later, we opened up, but we decided that we were just going to open up at our residence. So we had, we opened a gym there. And we've been running the woodshed out of there, kids classes and adult classes for the last three, yeah, two and a half years. So that's what we've been doing. We wanted to bring it back to Claris Home, but we just had to be careful because who knows? I mean, we didn't know whether or not COVID was going to impair us again, and we still don't know, but we are willing to take a chance. So here we are, and we're looking for a big enough space. So the arena was really perfect. We kind of looked at it previously. We thought it would be great for not only the community, but to be able to be in an area like that where we could also kind of feed off of the other clubs and provide for the other clubs. We'd like to be able to have some sort of a workout facility there, too, so that James and Rio can also do some private coaching for football team, for hockey players, for whoever need more like specific coaching and stuff. And yeah, so that's kind of the woodshed in a nutshell. But classes for kids and for adults is what we're going for again.
Open it for questions or discussion.
Pardon me?
Updoor, updated door system. Where is that going to be?
So when we spoke to your arena manager, was it, the arena manager?
Mike.
Is that recreation's manager?
Manager. He suggested, because we were saying, why don't we put key fob or keyless entry on the top door? And he said even better yet, why don't we put one on the front door? It would probably be a smarter idea. And there was also power to the front door. So we just want it a little bit safer. We don't want people, you know, coming and going. We want to just make sure that it's our member. So we just wanted to do something either keyless or some sort of a fob entry.
You're looking for a six-month contract. Once hockey season starts again and they start to use that upstairs area, you're looking to subcontract to them? Or is that what I'm reading correct here?
No. No, we, we said that we would like to try it for six months and make sure that it's something that's going to work for the town and work for us. We'd obviously like to have something that's more permanent. We'd like to be in there, you know, going forward, but you never know. It might not fit. So we were saying, can we, can you give us a six-month term and see if it works for both parties and then go from there? So we'd be happy to sign a lease that was a six-month. And then after that, if it works, then we'd do a year-to-year if that's possible.
Yeah. And then if it would work, you're looking to sublet or?
No. Denise was asking us, there was yoga and dance, I think, up there?
Muay Thai.
And Muay Thai previously. So she was saying, well, what about these clubs if they ever want to use the facility? And we said, we'd be happy to sublet for the same price that the arena is currently subletting for, to allow them to come in and participate, but it would have to be under our allowance, whether it was something that would actually fit into our gyms. So previously, we did yoga. We did, what else did we do? We did like some women's classes, some self-defense classes. We've even done dance classes there. But again, we'd be open to subletting, but it depends on who's asking and whether they're well-vetted and they're going to be somebody that's going to, you know, take care of the facility as well.
Any other questions? It looks like everyone's thinking really hard. No one wants to speak up.
No, I'm just trying to figure it out and clarify. So you want a contract, so you want the mezzanine for yourself for the whole six months? That's not what I read. Okay.
Yeah, we would like to rent it permanently for as long as you'll allow us to.
Right, but you want to have that possession like that and then sublet it to yoga or whatever, but you have it as your kind of area.
Yeah, yeah. We wanted to avoid having people come in and just wander through our space, right?
No, that makes sense.
And we knew that Denise was wanting to and the town was wanting to try and rent that building or that space out. You know, it's a hard space to rent and we've had issues in the past. So we said, well, why don't we do a full, actual rental, so.
And so when hockey season does start in September and they have a tournament, that mezzanine will not be available to them?
We did say, however, that parents or anybody who wants to come up and watch, and we're open, we're going to have a little seating area where they can.
Yeah, it's not necessarily for watching. They use it a lot for their raffle tables and their hockey, those types of things is where they set up a lot of those, that kind of stuff. So that's why it's just kind of, would be doable downstairs, do you?
So currently, do, does the Hockey Association rent the upstairs for their, they, for the tournaments?
When they have a tournament? I don't know the legal side of whether they pay for the mezzanine during the hockey tournaments or they just use the mezzanine. I don't know if it's, I don't know what they do that way.
I know when there was a lot of, when there was a lot of teams or we were having a bigger tournament, we did go upstairs. We kind of just filter into there if there wasn't any space, but it was never something that, like, we planned to go upstairs. They tried to utilize the basement because they didn't want to have to clean the upstairs all the time, so.
And then you have just primarily evening classes? Or is it all day?
We, that's the thing is, we want to be able to run our classes seven days a week, kind of throughout the day. We're going to be able to provide some mom-and-talk classes, some, it totally depends because when we sublet as well, we want to be able to give access to, you know, the daytime for yoga, nighttime for yoga. We run our classes kind of depending on our kids, depending on the kids' ages, depending on our adults and that. So we should be running at least our adults, we do three classes a week, one open mat so they can come and be with their families and kind of just, you know, visit. And then our kids, we usually do two classes for our older kids a week. And then our younger kids that are usually around that six to eight or six to 10, we do two classes. And then we do tiny mites or mini monsters and we do one class a week for them, so. And we were just about to do women's classes and then our self-defense again, so we have quite a few.
Anyone have any other questions? I just need some time to discuss this further and think on it, I think, a little bit. Do you have anything else to add for us?
No, other than we, we grew up in this community, a lot of us, and we, I think that there is a hole we saw missing. There's a lot of our kids that, you know, they didn't participate in, you know, hockey and the traditional sports. And this gives kids that, you know, maybe they don't have a lot of friends or maybe they don't have a community or connection. And adults that are struggling and we really wanted a space for them. And we've also really pushed hard for like this whole mental health and wellness idea with the woodshed and trying to bring people in from, you know, the ADAC and trying to help people that are recovering addicts and people that are struggling mentally. And like, that was the big push. And James is a veteran and we really want to create a veterans program and they're willing to work with us. And that would be so amazing to be able to have veterans be transported down here from all different places in Alberta and give them something that can help them, right? So we know how much jujitsu has done for our members mentally, physically, and we just want to be able to give this to our kids. You know, we have a lot of young members that struggle hard and we kind of became that place where they knew they could go and they could get the help they needed, whether it was jujitsu or whether that was, you know, a big brother taking them and picking them up for class, or it was somebody saying, hey, I know you're not, you know, I know your mom can't buy groceries this week, here's, you know, here's some money, or here's some Christmas presents, or this or that. So we really pride ourselves on that and that's why I think it's so important that we, you know, create this in town again and, you know, so, yeah.
It's me. I've talked about it a lot, but it's not there anymore, so.
Yeah.
That's one thing I noticed, too, when we had the kids program, was just the short time we were there, the turnaround that I saw in their faces and in their body languages that they were just able to speak to us eye to eye, even though when they came in the first time, they were all these shy inside their shell. But when the martial arts came in and started, we started teaching them, they just evolved and flourished into this being that they are and they were very, very, they took it in so quickly. And we went to tournaments and they came back home with gold. Like, I've never seen that before. They were so, they were just so passionate about it. And it amplified onto the mats when they were competing. So that's why, this is a very big deal for me, for us anyway, especially for the kids, that this continues long-term. Because of what's going on right now in the world, they're just, they're kept in the dark and we tend to forget about them, but we haven't forget about them. Like, we're here, we'll push this as hard as we can, like.
Yeah. I think that's great. Does anyone else have anything to add at this time? No? I think it was great information. I think it's some food for thought for us to discuss and, yeah, thank you guys for coming in and.
Thank you for having us.
Talking about it, I appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Moving on to action items. Correspondence. Federation of Canadian Municipalities Annual Conference and Trade Show. Abe?
The Federation of Canadian Municipalities is having their conference and trade show in Regina, June 2nd to 5th. And we're just passing this on to council to see if there's any interest there. It looks like it's structured very similarly to the Alberta Municipalities Conference. We are members of this group. And structured similarly to AUMA with the education sessions and information sessions and networking and trade show and what have you, so. Just passing that on to council.
Open it for discussion. Questions, comments, concerns? Take it for information at this time. Moving on, correspondence. Mayor Cheryl Callen, no, Town of Mandair, Alberta Provincial Police Force. Maybe you can correct me on.
Nope, I think you did great there.
Okay.
More correspondence from another municipality. This one's about the provincial police service and just directed to the Minister of Justice and Solicitor General, CC'd on all the municipalities in the province, just objecting to the provincial police force transition proposal on account of concerns of cost, cost increases, primarily cost and, yeah.
Open it for discussion. Questions, comments, concerns?
Have you ever had Mandair sausage?
Yes, yes, I have.
Questions, comments, or concerns related to the police federation?
I would take some if they would send some to councillor Zimmer.
I guess you can take it for information at this point and move on. Moving on to number three, unless.
No.
Okay. Correspondence. Mayor Jack Van Ryan, thank you. Town of Coldail, increasing utility fees. Abe?
Yeah, we're seeing a lot of this as well, council, municipalities and municipal councils showing support for residents and businesses and nonprofits alike with the increasing costs of living in general, particularly utility fees. Both the rates, the cost of the usage and the transfer and delivery charges as well. And so this is just another one of those items for your information.
Questions, comments, concerns? Take it for, go ahead.
The only thing I want to say is we have followed up with our support, sending in the support letters for these two different topics, and we've done what we've can to support. So it's not falling on deaf ears, it's just we've done a lot of the work already, so.
Thank you for that. Take it for information at this time then and move on to correspondence. Carmengay Horticultural Association. Carmengay's annual sports day and fair. Abe?
Invite for council to attend the Carmengay festivities. And it looks like it's taking place August 6th and the parade at 9:00, 9:30. Judging starts and rolls out at 10 o'clock. And there's a list of other events for the horticultural days, sorry, annual sports day and fair.
So the issue is, is it still?
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to clarify, too, if I can. So another little note here says the parade's the same day as a Coldail Candy Parade on August 8th, which council already decided to attend. This parade is not one we typically send the town to Claris Home float to. Which one don't we typically send that float to?
So we don't typically go to Carmengay, but then I don't think they're very consistent.
Right, okay, okay.
And so, I mean, I was just putting that details there that it is closer.
It is closer.
It's closer to go to Carmengay than it is to go to Coldail. So it's up to you. I mean, I, this, I hadn't seen this before. And then I just, today I got the invite for Coldail. So, I mean, it's, it's just up to council what you would like to do.
Typically, we go to Coldail, is that correct? Do we have a driver for the float already for this particular date?
So I haven't organized that yet. I've been, I asked you guys if you wanted to go and I didn't get very many hands up, so I just need to know if you're going to step up or if I have to find someone to drive the float. So that's, I haven't secured that yet.
There'll be a driver.
Won't be me.
You can sit in the passenger seat. Like I said, we'll make sure there's a driver and stuff like that and.
So if you, if you choose to do this one instead of Coldail, we'll just need a motion for that because your motion before already said we're going to Coldail, not Carmengay.
So is it a special one? For, it's just a regular Carmengay annual sports?
It's been a few years, says they've, since they've held their event, but doesn't look like it's like a anniversary or anything like that.
I'm perfectly fine keeping the existing, existing schedule. And it's been noted that councillor Cutler will be managing the organization of drivers as well, so Corinne, you don't have to worry about that. Thanks for stepping up, Mike.
Thank you, councillor Cutler. Councillor Cutler, thank you very much.
We always nominate Rod.
Wow. Yeah, I agree. I agree, keeping the regular schedule. I think that's appropriate.
Take it for information. Moving on, correspondence. Lethbridge Construction Association, complimentary brunch, June 2nd, 2022. Abe?
So we don't know a lot about this organization, but they have invited mayors, reeves, and CEOs to a brunch on June 2nd. It looks like there's a lot of kind of networking and sharing of best practices with this construction association, dealing with construction management issues, project issues in the region. So they've invited local municipalities, mayors and CEOs to that.
I have that morning off of work and I'm happy to attend as long as everyone is in agreement for me to represent. Thank you for turning off your microphone.
Yeah, just a little bit more information. It said there are a lot of things to know about when it comes to construction, procurement, insurance, bonding, contracts, codes, lean legislation. So I guess they have a lot of resources there and knowledge that they tap into.
I think it's a worthwhile avenue to open up, just reading the information package. I feel as though the invitation to municipalities at this time is to strongly encourage municipalities to help step up to ensure that that development happens with, with the rise in construction costs. So don't, don't be surprised if, if as a municipality we're asked to incur some costs to ensure development happens.
Any other thoughts or comments with this? Thanks.
I can RSVP.
I don't know if I, oh, look, I might have already, I'll look and let you know.
You going, too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Moving on, correspondence.
Let's do it.
Clarson and Area Palliative Care Committee.
Let's do it.
Yeah, so this is the yearly light show that we've had it for two, three years now at the campground. And just getting the request in early to book the weekends, December 8th to 10th, 15th to 17th, and 22nd to 34th for the Christmas cruise drive-through light display. I believe that's been, sorry.
24, not 30.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. So it's just request to book the campground for that time. The town has put a display in the past as well. I believe this is quite a successful, well-attended event.
Same request, great fundraiser. I move that we allow it.
Moved by councillor Carlson. Question?
Moved by councillor Carlson to allow the Claris Home and Area Palliative Care Committee to use Centennial Park campground for a Christmas light display as a fundraiser, to allow them to use the town's power supply for their display and to ensure that the roads are clear, snow for their event to be held in December of 2022.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Passed. Moving on to correspondence. Glenda McNair, use of Centennial Park. Abe?
So a request from a resident to use the Centennial Park for a family reunion, or a portion of Centennial Park. On June 4th from 2:00 to 7:00, there's a request in here to use the, also to use the campground kitchen and bathrooms. We don't normally book the, those public areas for, for residents, so, and I don't think it would be, I'm just going to give you my opinion here, but the campground kitchen is supposed to be for the campers. So what I would suggest is we just communicate with them, let them know they can go ahead and use, use the space. And we'll try to get the washrooms open. I haven't been able to connect with recreation to see when these washrooms open at the, at the spray park. But we'll try to work with them on that as the best we can. Any thoughts or comments, questions?
So, I mean, in the past, we used that kind of kitchen at the campground for baseball, hot dog, you know, wrap-up parties and those types of things. So, I mean, if the campground's not busy, I don't see why they couldn't utilize it. But I mean, if the campground's busy and it's being utilized, again, it's just kind of that process that if it's there and available, they can use it, but.
Generally for, I think for nonprofits and charities is usually what we would do, something like that more so, but.
I think it would just be a communication of sort of a first come kind of basis and if they have a really great family reunion.
Sure.
Yeah. Any other comments with it?
No, I'm sure they can work with the campground management to just organize it between themselves and ain't nothing but a chicken wing.
Yeah. It's very nice of them to ask, though. You don't need a motion or anything. It's about time to take it for information and.
No, we'll, we'll just work with them to see what we can do for them within reason for their event.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Move on then. Correspondence. Paul Zemlat, Clarison Pharmacy. Town council taxes increase will kill businesses. Abe?
Correspondence from a local business owner regarding the tax increases this year. In addition, there's concerns, and we hear a lot of this, council, we've already heard it tonight, with utility cost increases. It is, it is a burden on our businesses, on our residents. Everybody's feeling it. And so this is some correspondence from a local business owner, just about those, those pressures in, in running a business. And.
Open it up for.
This, this came up at another meeting as well, and my, my question, we talked about putting in the paper the tax breakdown, right, of, you know, where your dollars are going, right? Like, this is the increase because of policing, this is the increase of this, right? And there was a lot of interest in seeing that model kind of pushed out to the community so people can see where and why a lot of this. Again, I think a lot of this is education and communication around, you know, ours is .88 tax increase and a lot of these other things, you know, or sorry, .1 for businesses, I think, or something. But I think a lot of this has to do with a lot of information and I'm excited to see that. And I think this is a hot topic that might be an open house conversation later.
I believe that did go out with the assessment. Did?
Yep, it did. Did we post that on Facebook?
Yeah, well, it's on, it's on the website.
It's on the website, right? Like, and I did direct a lot of, you know, hey, we got a lot of information of why and how and those types, but that diagram and those explanations are there? Okay, okay.
Any other thoughts or comments on this?
Yeah, just on, on the point of ensuring that we're doing our due diligence in, in communicating with, with the residents of, of why it's happened. I know administration worked hard to keep the numbers down as much as possible. our due diligence in, in communicating with, with the residents of, of why it's happened. I know administration worked hard to keep the numbers down as much as possible. What I think we also have to start communicating is that there is a need for community growth, which will diversify that tax burden as well. So understanding that if, if we as a community can promote our community to grow, it also benefits the rest of the community. So yeah, there's, I know my businesses faced significant tax increases this year. My residential, not so much. But yeah, we're in a position where diversification will hopefully lead to some tax savings for the residents as well. So I would, I would gladly spread out the, the tax burden onto increased business in town instead of just increased home prices.
Any other comments in regards to this?
Growing the community is critical. That's, we've been saying since the election. And you can't keep taxing the same residents and same businesses year after year after year without growth to spread that out. So that's why I said the next two years, it's critical for this town.
I think as I said it to another resident, it's time that we, as a council, take the community's money and put it where our mouth is. We've, we've got to become innovative within this room in order to make things go. And I fully expect not to get elected again if it doesn't happen. So yeah, we've got some responsibilities to, to step up to now there.
Any other thoughts, comments? Take this as information at this time and move on to correspondence, Jenny McMasters, Canadian Powerlifting League. Abe?
Yeah, we got some correspondence out of the Canadian Powerlifting League in Nanton. The Canadian Powerlifting Nationals are going to be held August 20th to 21st. And they're looking for sponsors. To my knowledge, I, I kind of checked with the Economic Development Officer, not common for us to send sponsors kind of out of town for events like this. But we certainly can circulate this to the chamber and to local businesses to see if they'd be interested in sponsoring. Unless, of course, council wants to go ahead and sponsor, and we can work with them to do some kind of sponsorship as well.
Open this for discussion.
I think it's probably better to hand it out to the other committees to look at sponsoring this rather than town council doing it.
I'd be fully willing to take a pool amongst the councils for whichever mayor can lift the most between us and them.
You could have a little liftoff.
Yeah, I think so.
Five hundred bucks on the line.
Yep.
Oh, gosh, you guys, this, we're now challenging Mayor Hanley for this? Is this?
This is kind of what I'm hearing.
All right, well.
I can set that up.
Are you guys paying out of your personal pocket, though?
Yes, correct. Geez, that would be funny.
Directly donated back to the Powerlifting Society, in your honor.
That's right, in the honor of the winner.
I have a weight bench at home. You guys might, I guess I will. Well, if you. I'm up for the challenge, I guess, if that, if you guys are willing.
Did you want to coordinate that then, Counselor Cutler?
I haven't got a text yet, but it's probably in the works.
Oh, oh dear.
Do we have a parade that day?
Rod Kettles, I'm in. He's throwing in some money. Okay, guys, so do you need a motion for me to hurt my back? No?
Actually, we prefer not to have a motion when you.
I don't know what to do with that at this point.
Leave it in the trust, trusted hands of Counselor Cutler.
Cutler and Carl, so they'll take care of it.
Okay, let's move on quickly then to number 10, Training, Elected Officials Training Program, Regional Partnership and Collaborations. Abe?
Just a notice to council about some training through the Elected Officials Training Program. We currently have a couple of council attending some of the training for planning and development issues. This one is on regional partnerships and collaboration, virtual sessions. So the dates are June 8th, June 15th, June 22nd, going from 2 to 5 each day. Good, good training programs that they offer through the EO EP. If you're interested, we can sign you up.
We'll all look at our schedules and get back to you.
Counselor Carlson?
I, I can confirm already, my schedule is full, so I will not be attending.
I just noticed the mayor was pulling out a calendar to start booking, so I thought we could do that later.
No, I'm, I'm actually, I'm booked those days as well, so I was just looking to see and I'm currently enrolled in one. I didn't feel absolutely keen, but thank you for that.
Take it for information.
Take it for information as long as everyone's happy with that.
June 8th, 15th, 22nd, she better be weight training.
All right, moving on, Request for Decision. F C, we'll take it for information. We'll move on for a Request for Decision, FCSS Summer Bash. Abe?
So FCSS is looking to hold its second annual community summer bash. They'd like to observe Patterson Park on July 28th from 5 to 8 for that purpose. There's going to be a food truck, bouncy house, sparkle tattoo vendor, outdoor games. They had, it looks like 200, 250 people last time, so. Also be having the Public Works assist hauling tables and chairs and whatnot, setting up tents as well. So just opportunity to promote the event to council and also just to get a, hopefully approval from council for the use of that park.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the use of Patterson Park for FCSS.
Move by Counselor Cutler, question?
Move by Counselor Cutler to approve the use of Patterson Park for Clarison and District FCSS's community event on Thursday, July 28th, 2022, from 5 till 8 P M.
Further questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Passed. Moving on, Request for Decision, Estate Donation Sporting Equipment. Abe?
So back in 2014, the town received $29,534 from the estate of Ruby Thomas. And with the request that the money goes to purchasing skates and/or other sporting goods equipment for use by children. And so we're currently in the process of looking into a skate rental program that will work down at the arena. But in the meantime, there's other items here that we'd like to order with that money. And the first is an inflatable obstacle course at Bouncy Castle. The second is a pool equipment, inflatable pool obstacle course. And then the last one is a library sports loner set. And that would essentially, we would purchase that equipment, pass it over to the library, and they would handle all that loner lending and, and maintenance of that equipment in-house. So those are the three items we're requesting out of that funding with the conversation about skating, skate program, rental program coming at a later date. But the total cost of that is $19,700.
Open it for discussion.
I'm good with it.
Denise put this together?
Yeah.
She did a pretty good job picking up some, some pretty cool things, I think.
She did.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Counsel, or move by Counselor Cutler, question?
Move by Counselor Cutler to approve the sporting equipment purchases as presented with the funding to come from monies donated by the estate of Ruby Thomas.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Passed. Moving on for Request for Decision, West Rose Avenue Infrastructure Project. Abe?
Now, this infrastructure project is on the 2022 capital budget. And we're just looking for council's approval on what company to award this project to. Is for some water main rehab on West Rose Avenue. And the engineer put out an open tender process, received five bids. And we've provided you with the information in the agenda package on the bid costs and the, the recommendations, the rankings from I S L. McNally Contractors is their recommended contractor to use. They're not the cheapest, but they are under the original budgeted amount that we had for this. Additionally, the reason they scored higher is because of their level of experience in working on these kinds of projects. And also they offered a six-week window rather than an eight-week window, which is one of the other contractors below them. We did contact, below them in, in cost. We did contact the engineer and asked them about the Silver Ridge bid, which is about $35,000 less. They said they would be open to, to working with Silver Ridge as well. But again, their, their project is, is eight weeks rather than six weeks, and they don't have quite the same level of experience as McNally's, so.
Open up for questions or comments. Counselor Schlossberger?
What does rehabilitation mean?
So the existing lines, it's actually not an old line. Normally, we're going in to replace old, worn-out lines. But these lines have some issues with the couplers, and they've been leaking for years. It's not an old line, but while they're in there, they're going to upgrade it to eight-inch line as well. It's currently a six-inch line. And so they're going to upgrade it to a, to an eight-inch line, which is the standard practice now.
Thank you.
Just in this, it says they're quote included a few items, the others do not. Do you know what those items included? And the financial value associated with them?
I, I don't have those details off the top of my head, sorry.
Counselor Schlossberger?
I make a motion to award it to McNally.
Motion by Counselor Schlossberger, question?
Move by Counselor Schlossberger to award the West Rose Avenue project to McNally Contractors 2011 Limited in the amount of $570,148.21 plus GST.
Any further questions, comments, concerns with this? All in favor? Passed. Moving on, Request for Decision, Request for Tax Waiver Medical Clinic. Abe?
Historically, council has waived, rather not waived, but appropriate wording here is to refund the taxes for the medical clinic in town, which is owned by the M D. We, council did this in 2018, 2019, 2020 and 2021. And it's just, in the past, it's been out of recognition for the work and the service that the clinic provides for the community. So the request has come through again to reimburse the taxes as council has done in the past.
Counselor Schlossberger?
The M D considers this their contribution to the Physician Recruitment and Retention Committee.
Say that again?
The M D considers this their contribution to the Physician Retention and Recruit, Recruitment and Retention Committee.
I don't understand how us waiving their taxes is their contribution to their physician. Are you talking about the building itself that they keep in the town? That that's their contribution?
Maintain.
Yes. You're right, that is what they say. But they still charge rent and.
What do we receive because of that?
What do we receive because of their contribution to the physician recruitment?
No, what do we receive because they, we waive their taxes?
$74,000.
That has nothing to do with the taxes. That's an administrative collaboration framework contract. Previous to this year, it did. That's correct. Previous to this year, it did. And no longer. Now it's a five-year contract.
Has there ever been discussion about, I'm going to do that for, I'm sorry, I'm just asking, has there ever been discussion about putting a cap on what we would waive?
No.
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 There was, there was a year where it wasn't waived, or a couple of years where it wasn't waived. And, and the recreation grant or portion thereof was canceled.
So in the end, it basically means that us waiving this takes the rent for the doctors down. So it's our contribution to the physician retention at this point with the new service contract. And I think it's imperative that we keep that open to maintain the ability for the doctors to, to feel welcome within that setup that we've got. Many doctors have, have hospital rights versus having to start their own corporation. Which unfortunately is a detraction with our community once in a while. So to keep this relationship open, I would, I would move that we waive the property taxes this time.
Counselor Kettles states, if we waive them, then that would be our contribution. And I'm assuming he means that would be our contribution to the physician retention. Is that correct? Yeah, I'm happy with that. I would hate to say, no, we're not going to forgive the $7,000 and have the physicians have an increase in rent, so.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a motion on the floor.
Who made the motion, sorry?
Oh, Counselor, sorry, I missed that. Move by Counselor Carlson, question?
Move by Counselor Carlson to cancel the municipal portion of their 2022 property taxes levied on the property locate, owned by the M D of Walla Creek, located at 4215 Fairway Drive in the amount of $7,064.27 in the spirit of cooperation with our municipal neighbor. This cancellation is equitable to the parties involved in recognition of the support the M D of Walla Creek provides to the town of Clarison by way of the I C F recreation grant and the town's support of public health by way of supporting the Clarison Medical Clinic.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor Cutler?
I do want to make it noted that we do have a financial contribution to the physician recruitment team already as a part of the town of Clarison. So if we want to look at having this be that, the physician recruitment team. at having this be that, the physician recruitment team would probably need to be a part of that discussion if we're going to alter that kind of stuff, or if we're just looking at it that way. So, I mean, it's a touchy subject in regards to if we're going to start calling, you know, these contributions as our contributions to other organizations or other committees. But, yeah, we already do as a town financially support that, and the MD did pull their financial support from that recruitment program because of their building.
That's something to look into.
We haven't contributed to that committee.
Every year.
Every year?
Yep. It's in the plan.
I'd have to double-check, but I was under the impression that we have stopped active contributions to that committee. But I'll double-check on that.
I thought, I thought we didn't contribute for two years, but I thought that in our budget, we still had $3,000. That was designated for that.
It's budgeted into the program, but it's not physically into the bank account, but as responsibility for the contribution, it is budgeted into our yearly, from my understanding, is it's there if it's needed. It's just we haven't had to use a lot of it, but it's starting to be used a little bit more as they get a little bit more involved in trying to recruit doctors and, and stuff, and then even, I don't know if I can say it, but they're looking at turning into a healthcare recruitment team instead of a physician recruitment team because we're struggling with nurses and everything else, so it's, there's things in the works, but the money's still allocated, is that the word? There, if it's needed.
Okay. Well, all in favor for this motion? Any opposed? One opposed, motion passed. Moving on, request for decision, tax sale property. Abe.
Yeah, so municipal governments have powers under the MGA when ratepayers, property owners are in arrears on their taxes for a couple of years to put the property up for auction. And that's Section 418 in the MGA. And so council's obligation in that is to set the reserve price, which should be as closely as possible to market value, and set any other conditions, and set the dates for that sale as well. And so we have one property here for you that is in this current tax situation, that's been a couple of years since behind on taxes. There are the conditions that we're recommending for you on this RFD council, essentially that the parcel be offered for sale, subject to a reserve bid, and the reservations and conditions contained in the existing certificate of title, that lands are offered on an as-is, where-is basis, and, and forms of payment and deposit as well. So we're looking for three resolutions, one to set the date for the tax recovery auction, one to set the reserve bid, and finally, the terms and conditions as, as outlined in the RFD.
Open this for discussion right now? Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to set the date for 9:00 a.m. on August 23rd.
Motion by Counsel Cutler, question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler that the 2022 tax recovery auction date be set for 9:00 a.m. on August 23rd, 2022.
Further questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Passed.
I'll move that the 2022 tax recovery reserve bid is written out.
Moved by Counsel Zimmer, question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer that the 2022 tax recovery reserve bid for the southerly 104 feet in perpendicular width throughout Lot 4, Block 1, Plan 658-LK at $422,000.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Passed. For a third motion.
I'll make the motion that the 2022 tax recovery sale is subject to the terms and conditions of sale as recommended.
Move to Counsel Meister, question?
Moved by Counselor Meister that the 2022 tax recovery sale is subject to the terms and conditions of sale as recommended.
Any further questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Moving on, information brief, local government fiscal framework engagement. Abe.
So municipal affairs is engaging municipalities on the local government fiscal framework, that is, if you recall, replacing the MSI grant that was in place since 2007. There's two engagements that they're doing right now. One is regarding the actual funding scheme, the one that is on the agenda that they've asked councils to discuss with their administrations, is regarding what should be carried over from the local government, or, sorry, from the MSI to the local government fiscal framework in terms of the administration of the, the actual program. Why they're not engaging on the first one, which would be more pertinent to the councils, is beyond me. This is, this is, if you look at the engagement survey, it's, it's quite administrative-heavy, if you look at the questions, what they're asking. And by and large, I've done a few of the applications, they're fairly easy to work through. So I don't really have any particular concerns, I'll connect with Blair to see, go through this survey with him, to see if there's anything. There was a couple of items on there near the end that I thought you might want to weigh in on, council, under asset management, and maybe disaster resiliency, or any other item that caught your eye. But the asset management part is asking if, if the LGFF funding should be open to asset management processes, and, and I'm suggesting that we don't do that. That would make things a bit more cumbersome for us with projects that would actually probably make more red tape for municipalities, or at least it would limit, it would place limits on how they are to spend their capital funding. But they did ask if make asset management costs eligible for funding other, other municipal affairs grants programs. I would say yes to that, right? But not through our traditional capital, capital grant funding. Enable local governments to receive a greater percentage of LGFF funding if they fulfill defined asset management goals. Again, I'm, I'm not sure that complicates this, this process and kind of, kind of dictates a bit more how the money's supposed to be spent, right? So, any thoughts or comments from, from council? If not, we'll, we'll just go ahead, I'll work with Blair, and we'll, we'll fill this one out.
Questions, comments? Take it for information.
Yeah, and I think the main concern is really that, moving forward, the projected funding for capital projects is at thirty, about 35, 37% of the 10-year previous historical. That's really the big concern for municipalities, right? There's less money out there, not in how the, the project is administered, because they actually do, I find it's a pretty easy process administratively, so.
Not enough money. Take it for information, and moving on, information brief, CAO report.
Just some highlights, council, from the last month of what administration has been up to. Any questions on anything in there?
I didn't have anything to anyone else. Take it for information. Information brief, moving on, information brief, council, resolution status?
Just update on resolutions that you've passed in previous meetings and the progress on them. Questions, comments, concerns?
Oh, I, sorry, I skipped one, and information brief, council committee reports as well. Anyone need to elaborate on theirs?
Thanks, Ben.
It wasn't just Brad this time.
No. It was a big amount.
I was a little dismayed to hear this morning that Minister Switzer is not running again. So we're going to spend three hours tomorrow afternoon talking to him, and he's not going to be running anymore. So we'll be doing this a year from now.
Any other concerns? Take it for information. And then, sorry, 20, adoption of information items. Want to adopt them? Motion by Counsel Cutler, question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to adopt the information items as presented.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Passed. Looking for a motion to go in camera for contracts, Section 16. Moved by Counsel Carlson to go in camera, all in favor? In camera at 8:08 p.m., camera off. All right, looking for a motion to come out of camera?
On, there we go, I'll make a motion to come out of in-camera.
Motion by Counsel Zimmer to come out of in-camera. I'm going to question, just to make sure I got it right.
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to come out of in-camera at 8:22 p.m.
All in favor? Passed. Looking for a motion in regards to contracts, Section 16, in regards to the 1949 Chevrolet Brickell Seagrave Pumper.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Counsel Cutler, question?
Moved by Counselor Cutler to approve amendments to the transfer of ownership agreement of the 1949 Chevrolet Brickell Seagrave Pumper as presented.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor? Motion passed. Motion to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Counsel Carlson, all in favor? Any opposed?
No, that wasn't in favor.
Oh.
Sorry, I was itching my ear.
Meeting adjourned at 8:22 p.m.
Hey, guys, see you next time.
See you, Rob.